Will please come to order. It is December the 12th at 6:00 PM. At this time, we will stand and ask Pastor Raymond Duval of the Beachside Fellowship Church to lead our invocation, and then we will pledge allegiance to our flag. Pastor?
Thank you. Let's pray together. As we come into this place tonight, Lord, we're grateful for all of the things that you've done for us over the past year, and I thank you for the work of this council and the staff. I thank you for your blessings upon them, and we look forward to an exciting year in 2014. At this final meeting of this year, Lord, I thank you for the fact that you bless each and every person in the city of Panama City Beach. During this Christmas season, we thank you, Lord, that there'll be a spirit of giving and a spirit of peace in our community. Lord, we thank you that even tonight in this place, that there is peace and harmony and joy, and we look forward to what you're about to do in the coming year, and we ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor. At this time, we will look at the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions? Hearing none, we will accept the agenda. We need to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on November the 14th and the rehearing minutes of November the 19th. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Councilman Russell.
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Strange.
Councilwoman Curry.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Reekert.
Yes.
Councilman Russell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Strange.
Yes.
Mayor Oberst.
Yes. At this time, we will have the consent agenda.
We have one item on the consent agenda this evening. Resolution 1420, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Purchase, Police Department. Be it resolved that the appropriate officers of the city are authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the city. That certain agreement between the city and Motorola Solutions relating to purchase of seven portable radios and eight noise-canceling public safety microphones in the total amount of $20,583.80 and substantially the terms set forth in the quote attached and presented to the council today dated June 19, 2013. With such changes, assertions, or omissions as may be approved by the city manager, whose execution of such agreement shall be conclusive evidence of such approval.
Are there any comments on the consent agenda from the audience? Hearing none. It is available for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Councilman Curry.
Second.
Second, Councilman Reekert.
Madam Currie. Councilman Curry.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Reekert.
Yes.
Councilman Russell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Strange.
Yes.
Mayor Oberst.
Yes. Moving to the regular agenda items. Item number one, Resolution 1418, calling for referendum in ballot questions of charter amendments.
Resolution 1418. It's a resolution of the city of Panama City Beach, Florida, calling for combined referenda on several amendments to the city charter, approving the subject matter of each referendum, setting the date of the referendum to be April 22, 2014, providing for notice thereof establishing the ballot title and question for each referendum, authorizing the city manager to make such corrections and amendments as may be necessary to accomplish the purposes of this resolution, and providing immediately effective date. In sum, Mayor, council, you have already proposed the amendments to the charter by ordinance. This resolution, and that ordinance is not effective unless it's adopted. Each one of those changes is adopted by the people, approved by the people, the voters at referendum. This resolution merely sets the wording of each one of those ballot questions and the date of referendum.
Any questions or comments?
Sets the wording, meaning the wording now cannot be changed?
You can always do, you can amend the resolution if you wanted to, but there will be a time. I'll let Ms. Myers describe to you when that time is, but the supervisor elections has some deadlines when he would be offended if you change it.
He sets his ballot at the end of the qualifying period, so the Monday after the last day of qualifying, which is roughly the second or third Monday in February, will be our drop dead date to change anything.
This is just a resolution, sir.
Any questions from the audience or comments?
I think it looks very good, by the way, and I could understand it.
That's good.
Thanks.
Anything else from the council? Resolution 1418 is available for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Councilwoman Strange.
Second.
Second from Councilman Russell. Any other comments?
Madam Currie.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Reekert.
Yes.
Councilman Russell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Strange.
Yes.
Mayor Oberst.
Yes. Item number two on the agenda is Ordinance 1293, capital improvement schedule. This is a first reading.
It's an ordinance amending Ordinance 1143, known as the 2009 amended and restated City of Panama City Beach Comprehensive Growth Development Plan, amending the schedule, amending the capital improvement element to update the schedule of capital improvements, repealing all ordinances in conflict with and providing this ordinance shall take effect as provided by law.
Do we need any explanation on this, Mr. Leonard?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor and council. This is the annual update of the capital improvements scheduled to the comprehensive plan, so it would modify the comprehensive plan in that way, and every local government in the state is required to do this and adopt it by ordinance. And most of the input, as you can see, is from Mr. Short and also John from CRA doing the roadways, and it's just those capital improvements that are necessary to maintain the level of service that's established in the comprehensive plan. So it's not every project that the city will do by any means, but it's just those things, sewer, water, sanitation, roadways, parks and recreation, those types of items that have an established level of service that shows that there's projects being done to maintain that level of service. And the planning board considered it at November the 13th, 2013, and recommended approval.
Any questions or comments? Anything from the audience? Then Ordinance 1293 is available for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Councilman Russell.
Second.
Second from Councilman Reekert. Any other comments?
Madam Currie.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Reekert.
Yes.
Councilman Russell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Strange.
Yes.
Mayor Oberst.
Yes. Item number three on the agenda is a request to cancel the Reed's Court Development Agreement.
This would be affected, should you approve it, by a cancellation agreement being entered by the city, and like all agreements, it should be approved by resolution, so Resolution 1422 addresses this matter. Be it resolved that the appropriate officers of the city are authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the city.
It's just for discussion.
Oh, that's what tool we would use.
We don't have one of those.
Yeah.
I was trying to find it.
Mr. Leonard, please. Thank you.
Now, you knew what was going on, right?
The city has a request from the property owner, Jimmy Williams, about to terminate, to consider terminating the development agreement. That was approved in 2007, and it's good for 10 years, 2017. This was before we had the new land development code. He and his consultant have gone through the new land development code and like how it applies to his property, and he is eventually looking to sell it, and he's been having some interest in it, and it's kind of confusing potential buyers, that he's got one set of regulations from an old code that's carrying over for the next three years. With the economy, they bought it by the time they figured up and got their loan and can do anything, that's expiring, and then the new code's kicking in. And so he has a request for you to consider at a future meeting, if you want to consider it at all, terminating the development agreement, which would mean that the land development code that applies citywide would then apply to this one. The copy of the development agreement, I believe, is in your packet along with some, a couple of drawings that the applicant had provided to you, and he has a representative here that will come up in a minute and explain to you in more detail what the request is and why. And then behind those two drawings, I did a quick little table that showed a comparison of the land uses and height that's allowed for the development agreement on that property as it relates to Summerwood subdivision and distance from it, from their rear property line, and compares that to what the land development code. And basically, about the first hundred or so feet, you get a little bit better protection, just generalizing, under the development agreement, because it restricts what you can do in that area a little bit more than what the land development code does. But then, after that, there's a significant benefit going with the land development code as opposed to the development agreement, because you can end up having a 32-story building a couple hundred feet under the development agreement, which practically takes away a lot of the good that the first hundred feet does under the development agreement, whereas under the land development code, you're ended up limiting to a 40-foot, a 45-foot height limitation for the duration of the property. So those are some of the things, but I probably should be quiet and let the applicant come up and speak to you and see if you want to entertain the idea or not.
Good evening, Panama City Beach City Council. I'm Ron Thomason. Many of you know me over the last 10 years, working as a land planning specialist in this area. I'm representing Mr. Williams or Reed's Court. Mr. Williams would like for his property to be better developed, to fit into what Panama City Beach can be and is becoming under y'all's city leadership, and he approached me back when he had the property under contract, right before the oil spill, and asked me to take a look at some of the preliminary meetings y'all had had and discussions about modifying the land development regulations. Unfortunately, the oil spill happened, and he received a letter from the developer that was contemplating the development there at the time, that because of the oil spill, he was going to pull out of the situation, and since that point in time, Mr. Williams has been hoping to find someone on to buy and develop his land. And many of you know Jimmy, know he's not a developer, and you know that he has always loved this community and really does like to see that large, one of the largest parcels of land in that entire area of the beaches. Reed's Court has a very beautiful man-made lake, Lake Elizabeth only, that could really attractively be done. And so, once the new regulations were adopted by the city, he asked me to review his existing circumstance, which included development agreement under discussion tonight, and the development, if it was done, under the way the rest of the beach will now be developing. Frankly, I am a fan, as a planner, of the codes that the city has adopted here. I think it's one of the most progressive, far-reaching visions for a community of anything I've seen in this part of Florida, comparable to some of the best plans I've seen anywhere. And to that, I compliment you all, including your plan department. But my issue to him was that his net value of development is about even under the two, but that for the betterment of the community, and certainly the developer who buys it, and in the city, because if a developer, say, did buy it in the short period of time that's left and went through the phases of getting permitted and all the design elements that have to go in, he would be developing this project right about the same time the development agreement expires anyway. And if he develops it under the old agreement, then the city would be responsible for the life of that project, which could be decades, of enforcing a code of the development agreement as opposed to the code enforced for everybody else in town. So we felt like it's a win-win-win for everyone if we took a look at dissolving the development agreement. And one thing I'd like to make very, very clear. Is this working? Really? I apologize that Jimmy had to go out of town very unexpectedly this afternoon. He called me, and I was in the middle of looking at property at Holmes County. I don't typically appear before you without being dressed for the occasion, so I apologize. This particular drawing, which is a representation of, under the existing development agreement, what could be built, and as you can see, over on the left-hand side would be where Summerwood is, and at the time this was adopted, Summerwood was very upset about what might happen next to their property. If I owned a house in Summerwood, I'd have felt exactly the same way. And through several months of negotiating and working with the local neighborhood, Jimmy brought this plan together that the city originally, I mean, eventually adopted. But looking at that compared to this over the same piece of land, it doesn't change how many units that Jimmy could do, or square feet. It simply means he can't concentrate and build a monolithic structure to create the canyon effect that, in my opinion, we don't need any more canyons out here. We need what the code says that we need to develop our beach community to become, and we felt like this would be more representative. Keep in mind that we are not in either in the agreement or what we're asking for anyway. I thought, I've been ill for two months. I thought that was my stomach again. That's what it sounds like on the inside when I have that problem. But there is a unique land use category that we're not touching with this request of conservation between Summerwood and between this development that cannot be built on regardless of whether we dissolve or keep the agreement, and that remains in effect, and that's this vegetated area right here. As you see, it also exists in the agreement that's currently in place. So our request is, it just seems commonsensical that this could go away. It takes another layer of bureaucracy out of the process. It allows this property now to be very cleanly advertised for development, 30-plus acres, including Gulf Run, as based upon one of the best building codes in the entire coastal area of northwest Florida. And that will help him sell the property. It'll have development consistent with your plans, and we don't have to worry about enforcing something that will be cumbersome down the road, or it could be negative to try to sell the property since the period of the agreement runs out in 2017 anyway. I'll be glad to answer any questions, and thank you for indulging a person that just got back on his feet from N6. Thank you. Oh, and by the way, those seats, it's been so long since I've been here, these new theater seats. Well, those are nice. I really enjoyed sitting back there. One day, y'all probably gonna have an IMAX theater-type council room.
So, Mr. Leonard, what Reed's Taylor Court would like from us is to say that we will, that we are interested in, does he want us to say we'll have a hearing and talk about it?
Yes, to consider it, yes.
Two public hearings are required. Unless you have one tonight.
We'd rather have one more, if that's possible.
May I speak to it? There are two mechanisms in the statute to dissolve a development agreement. One, it can be done mutually by the parties by cancellation. That's sort of a standard, you would do it in a standard meeting. It doesn't require extraordinary notice. The city can also unilaterally terminate a development agreement. Usually, when a developer is in breach, you can exercise that right. That does require extraordinary notice and two public hearings. What I think we're recommending is, because it comes from the developer himself, if staff and the city council agrees, and I know, I don't think staff has any objection to this request, we could mutually cancel this without the extraordinary notice and the two public hearings. But it's up to you. If you want to have the two public hearings, you can certainly do that.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it. I mean, it's advantageous to everyone.
We need to advertise it, if you wanted to have that made. Yes.
So is the council thinking that we're amenable to?
Consider it.
To consider it.
What's recommendation from you?
I agree with the request. I think it would be good to terminate the agreement and go by the land development code.
So it just takes one of these things that we knew we were going to be doing, housekeeping, to go to the new code and have the old code fade away, is that correct? Just going to be tidying this up as well?
Well, we wouldn't have to change anything in the land development code at all. This would be just, this would be-
That's what I'm saying, but this would then be totally, the new agreement, new owner would be under the new code.
Or if Jimmy wanted to keep hanging on to it, he would just fall under the new code. Exactly. The old, once again, a larger property now would go away, having the old code applied to it, and would fall under the new code. Yes.
So we would, according to Ms. Amy, we would need to instruct you guys to bring back to us a resolution saying, or that we agree, mutually agree?
It would be a resolution that mutually cancels the agreement and records that in the public record so that future owners and purchasers of the property would know that they would be subject to the new land development code rather than the old development regulations that are presently controlling the property.
Mutually between?
It's agreeable, between both the city and the owner.
The city and the property.
We're not unilaterally canceling it without the developer's permission or consent.
Do we need a motion to do that? Direct?
You already have the cancellation agreement and the resolution with you. You need to, by indicating that, correct, if I'm wrong, but seriously, by indicating you're giving staff the direction to set up the mechanism so you can adopt the resolution.
Is that the will of the council?
May I ask a question, Ms. Mayor?
Don't complicate things. We just agree to do-
Not sure I understand enough to complicate, but I just want to make sure I understand so I can tell Jimmy. What you're saying is, is that there'll be an advertisement and a resolution brought forth at a future meeting, and at that point in time, y'all will take a vote. Will that be the only meeting, or will there be additional meetings after that for more votes to be taken to discuss it, seeming that, it seems like everybody's on the same page.
Ms. Ross is saying that would be the meeting.
We just need one more meeting.
Just one more meeting, okay. All we need to know at that point in time is to show up in case you have any questions. I think I can handle that. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, so wish of the council to go forward, yes. Item number four, schedule the hearing date and time to consider a multi-use entertainment facility at the old public on Hutchison Boulevard. Ms. Smith has provided a calendar in everybody's packet. Mr. Leonard and Mr. Getzberg?
It looks like for this one, is it 9:00 AM on the 22nd? Is that correct, that we're suggesting, looking at? Yes.
So the staff is suggesting that we have, we have the hearing by the city council of the re, of the unconditional use?
Yes, it's a conditional use, and the reason it's coming to you is because you recently changed the ordinance that anything greater than three acres comes to you for conditional use. It doesn't stop at the planning board. This is larger than three acres, so it's coming to you with a recommendation from the planning board.
Does anybody have any objection to hearing it on the 22nd at 9:00 AM? Okay, that looks like everybody's nodding yes.
All right, we will notice it and let everybody know. Thank you.
Thank you. I know there's a couple of people here that were interested in that, and the item on the agenda today was strictly to schedule a hearing by the city council, and that hearing will take place on the 22nd, and it will be a public hearing, and if you want to have, if you want to say something about that pro or con, that would be the time to be here so that you can be recorded and be on the record. Item number five on the agenda, schedule the rehearing of the request to amend the plan of the La Bagada on Kelly Street. Mr. Leonard and Ms.-
It looks like from the calendar that we're looking at Thursday, the 9th, at either 4:00 or 4:30?
The 9th of-
January?
January.
A little earlier in the month. Since most of the hearing has occurred, I'm not sure to what, how much time would necessarily be needed.
If you remember, this was where we continued the hearing?
There's an open issue on the amount of time. Thank you for looking over that, Mr. Leonard. We have made, established contact with the owner of the middle piece, and we're waiting for their response. If they choose, I have, as previously indicated at the last meeting, I have concerns about proceeding without having very special notice given. We have not given that notice yesterday, and so we need to, how long that hearing will take will depend on what they choose to do. So we're waiting to relax on them. I would recommend you would have to schedule it at 4:30, and if there's not enough time then, or 4:00, whatever you prefer. If not enough time then, you can always continue it again.
Okay, anybody object at 4:30?
Can I ask a question on that?
Yes.
If someone, can we tell-
Yeah, sir, you've got to come up and give us your name and address and-
Frank Campus, 21726 Sunset Avenue. If one of our people that wants to speak isn't there, do y'all have the capability like a Skype or Yahoo where I can bring a laptop in here and they can talk? Has that ever been done, or could that be legally represented?
I'd like an opportunity to look at that. It depends on what, from a legal standpoint, it depends on the type of testimony that's being presented. If it's just a public comment-
It'd be a public comment, most likely.
That's up to you.
And in what we've done in the past, is that they just submitted it in writing?
I'm not concerned about public comment, if that's what y'all want to do, but if it's, if it's evidence, I'd like to look closely at that because your code does require that to be under oath, and when you're looking at evidence, one of the things that the fact finder is always expected to consider is the demeanor of the witness, and that's difficult to do through that sort of-
It most likely would be someone that's already spoken, and it was under oath the last time, but, and it might not even be used.
I don't have a problem with it. If they want to present evidence, I would request an opportunity to look and see whether you should take it that way.
Can we tell the gentleman that we will be back in touch with him?
That'd be fine. Yeah, I just wanted to raise the issue.
If they'd like to present sworn statements by affidavit, the council, I think, could accept that, if they wanted to.
Yeah, but I mean, this way, they can hear y'all, and y'all can hear them, just like a teleconference situation. Okay, all right.
Go have the name and address, and you need to give her your phone number before you leave.
For clarification, is this public comment or just?
Yeah, most likely it's just a public comment.
You said public comment. You think it's okay?
Yeah, well, that's up to y'all. You want to, that's a policy question, obviously, that you want to start taking public comment through electronic media. I mean, that's, that's a policy decision.
I don't think we should make that right now, because you could get, we could get into a filibustering situation that would be a nightmare. So we could sit here all night and keep calling if we don't have the state.
Let me look and see what other folks are doing, get with city manager, and we'll come back to y'all. Another one of those, our world is ingeniously changing situations.
All right. So we will have that, we will continue that hearing of the rezoning and whatever we do with the PUD at the La Bagada on the 9th of January at 4:30 PM. Item number six, Resolution 1421, Frank Brown Park and Aquatic Center Concession Stand lease.
Be it resolved that the appropriate officers of the city are authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the city, that certain agreement between the city and coastal parasail relating to the leasing operation of three concession stands at Frank Brown Park and the Aquatic Center for the base rental amount of $2,500 or 35.25% of gross sales, whichever is greater, for a two-year period commencing January 1, 2014, and substantially the form attached and presented to the council today draft dated December 6, 2013, with such changes, assertions, or omissions as may be approved by the city manager.
Questions for Ms. Ross, maybe Ms. Fire. Questions for the audience? Yes, sir.
I didn't know this was going to be on there, but while I'm here, I just wanted to put a plug in or ask a question or plant another seed. After being here 10 or 12 years and seeing the hundreds of thousands of traffic people go in and out of Frank Brown, and there's more activity to increase that, I have begged the television people for years and people, why can't we get a red light right there? Because a lot of these people are from out of state. It's very dangerous. It's a very dangerous situation, and I just wanted to be that on the public record.
Thank you.
Sir, we are currently looking at that location, and we do have the opportunity to leave the park going eastbound by going out Pier Park, and we are modifying, we're putting signage, and we're actually going to prohibit people from going out of that main entrance and force people to go to the left.
Police spend a lot of time sitting there with my tax money, protecting it. It's a very dangerous situation. Just common sense dictates that it should be a light there, in my opinion.
We are, we are forcing the people that are going eastbound to go to the light.
Okay, thank you.
And, and the city has been working on that for a number of years. It is a DOT road, and we have to go through them, so.
I've been there too.
That complicates the process. All right. Any other comments about the resolution on the concession stand lease? We will entertain a motion for Resolution 1421.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve from Councilman Curry.
Second.
Second from Councilman Russell. Any other comments? Madam clerk?
Councilman Curry?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Rieker?
Yes.
Councilman Russell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Strange?
Yes.
Yes. Item number 1423, fire department ATV purchase. This is a public hearing.
Resolution, City of Panama City Beach, Florida approving the purchase of a fire rescue off-road utility vehicle from GHC Motorsports in the amount of $10,249, authorizing a budget amendment to provide funding for the purchase of the off-road vehicle from fire impact fees and providing immediately effective aid.
Is there anything we need to know about that other than what we've heard?
I'd like to add one thing. After I prepared that resolution, the amount actually was changed. The actual amount of the purchase will be $10,822, which I believe is what your resolution says, but the title did not get changed in our version. The actual amount of the purchase is $822, which is what the resolution in front of you says. He read a different amount. Just wanted to clarify.
Good eye. In other words, it's not costing us $10,000.
The body of the resolution says the cost is $10,822. The title provided for $10,249, the actual amount is $10,822.
Your resolution in front of you is correct. He just, he read a different amount. Your resolution is correct.
Oh, okay. I thought you were going crazy there for a little while.
Yes, please.
Okay, any other questions about this resolution? Comments from the audience? Resolution 1423 is available for a motion.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve from Councilwoman Strange?
Second.
Second from Councilman Rieker. Any other comments? Madam clerk?
Councilman Curry?
Yes.
Councilman Rieker?
Yes.
Councilman Russell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Strange?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes. We will close the public hearing and move to item number eight, which is the nuisance abatement ordinance discussion, and I think we're going to have an update.
In your package, in your packages, color copy, I hope, of suggested revisions to the current nuisance substandard structure and junk abatement code.
It's Don Rieker.
Rich. The core of that ordinance, as codified, was from 1983. You will recall the last council meeting, following discussion of abating substantial nuisances, you instructed our office to proceed. I had laid out a litany of steps to pursue, sort of an order of march. The first step was to revisit our nuisance abatement ordinance. That is what is in your package in front of you. I'm happy to answer any questions. The purpose of having this ordinance is to amplify and supplement the common law of public nuisance abatement, to specify procedures using your home rule powers, to define nuisances using your home rule powers. I caution the council to understand that the courts have been very clear that while a finding by this council of what constitutes a public nuisance and subsequent application of that law by your staff to a particular circumstance in the real world is persuasive and entitled to deferential review, it is not conclusive. What is a public nuisance is only finally concluded by court decision if challenged. Basically, you have the authority as a legislative body to define what you feel constitutes a public nuisance, but that is subject to judicial review as anything else that you do. So, having said that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. One of the major changes is that we have defined as a public nuisance in your ordinance, subject to the procedures of your ordinance, any nuisance which was a public nuisance at common law in this case law that describes that. We've also borrowed from some other jurisdictions definitions of nuisances such as attractive nuisances involving children, just things that are a little more modern than the language that we originally had. Perhaps another change in here is that we have clarified that a fictitious person, a corporation or an LLC, can be guilty of a crime of maintaining a public nuisance, if it is knowingly maintaining that nuisance, and that the person in charge of that fictitious person, the natural person, the manager, the president, whoever, can be guilty of a crime, and that's a municipal offense. That's a higher standard of proof, et cetera, et cetera. It is a criminal situation. In terms of orders of abatement, we have provided that, and this is at page five, a recognition that the city can, in some situations, determine something to be a nuisance because of a history of that property failing to conform with the city's laws and a history of it constituting a nuisance. Again, that is something that has been used in other jurisdictions. We have also added, in terms of the cost of abatement, in addition to the provision of a lien, and as you all know, the, your ordinance still provides that it's a lien and left in there the language that it's super priority, but there is a Supreme Court case that says that that, you don't have the authority to do that. But in addition, we have dovetailed this ordinance, or we propose a dovetail of this ordinance to your non-adlorm assessment situation so that you are reciting in this ordinance you would be reciting in this ordinance, that the cost of assessing the property could be the subject of a non-adlorm assessment. We've also clarified or added that the cost of fees and expenses of, fees of expert, experts rendering opinions, reports, testifying on whether something is a nuisance would be included in the cost of abatement, and if you also, if you chose to levy a special non-adlorm assessment on the property to recover the cost of abatement, that the fees of an expert to assist you in deciding the extent to which the property had benefited or the burden imposed by the property on its neighbors had been relieved, which is the limit of what you can assess for, those fees would also be included in the cost of abatement. So, when we started this conversation months and months ago, I considered if you're going to proceed in a major case, I recommend you doing it with expert testimony in addition to your own department, and independent experts, and this ordinance provides for the cost of those experts to be included in the cost to be recovered by an assessment subject to the limitations of that assessment. Finally, we clarified that if there is an appeal, your current ordinance provides that it would be, the appeal would be handled pursuant to the new procedures in the new land development code for a quasi-judicial hearing. But coming off the last one we just had, I did add a provision in here indicating that the interested parties, that is defined in here as the people who have a right in the property, that tho, that, those interested parties would be deemed to be the applicant because that's the term used in the quasi-judicial hearing. So, we know who the applicant was, and so all those interested parties would be able to participate in the QJ hearing, the same as if they were the applicant for a rezoning change. I think that covers the things I wanted to mention to you. If you have any questions or comments, I'd be happy to inter.
Questions or comments for Mr. Sayre? So, what is the next step?
We can, you can consider this for reading. I'd like you to look at it and think about it. I mean, we're not in that big a hurry because we've still got to, we, unless you want to front the cost of dealing with any particular one, we've still got to work through the assessment. That conversation with Mr. Curry earlier tonight, he's aware of a particular instance in another jurisdiction that I'm going to be pursuing that has, that is of a relatively significant value, not as big as one that you might be considering, and I'm going to pursue that. But I think that the next step is to consider the adoption of this ordinance in January, and let me report back to you, perhaps in council, perhaps individually, how we're, how the recovery situation is lining up now next week. You want to tell them about the, we're going to meet with?
We'll be meeting with an appraiser and backup appraisers, basically go through this process and hopefully vetting through some professionals that know the values of these buildings and.
I want to hear, if you hire them, I want to hear what they think they can say, not necessarily in terms of the outcome of a particular case, but in what they feel qualified to examine and report on one way or the other.
Is this appraiser that you're talking about interviewing? Is this someone who's functioned as an expert with this?
Yes, yes, this is one, we're going to visit with the appraisers that you already have under contract for your Front Beach Road work.
Okay.
CRA work.
Thank you.
And, and I'm happy to confess here that I'm learning from them as well as them learning from me, and I want to understand, to make sure that we're not, that we're on the same page, what I'm looking for to show the court, and that they feel comfortable giving it to me. If not, then we'll back up two steps and start again.
Can I ask a humble question?
Yes.
Is there any expert witness on this plan that will not say, Beach Club Motel? Is it dilapidated? Can call him down? I mean, I, again, I understand the legal system and all of this, but I mean, we are jumping through, getting expert witnesses from the general layman, the laywoman, and look at that place.
Well, I did have, I did reach out and I have met with the owner of that property, and he is very articulate and committed to the principles that he feels are important to him and his interests. So, the.
The other component here, though, is when, when we notified the owner that the building was dilapidated and had come down, according to our current code, we have to be greater than half the value of the building in order to do so. But the value of the building isn't the current value of the building or the current appraised value of the building, it's the future value of the building if it's repaired, which is where this thing gets so complicated that I think that's, even if we were going to take steps forward with what codes we have today, we would have to get an appraiser of the future value of that building based on square footage and its location and repaired factor. So, I think any which way we look at it, we have to get an appraiser involved.
But, Ms. Curry, I guess the best way I can just answer that is, we've all seen this on one television show or another, there's a difference in knowing something and being able to put evidence on it.
And again, I'm concerned, I'm not just concerned about this issue, I'm concerned about future issues, and we spend millions and billions of dollars on Front Beach Road, and we have other issues like this in the future. So, I want to, you know, do this the right way, but an expert witness on this.
Well, if, if we could go back to the days and perhaps some legislation along these lines would be helpful. If we could go back to the days where it was clear that your plain nuisance abatement lien on the property was a super priority lien, then we could go back to the successes that Mr. Leonard and his team enjoyed by simply sitting down with the banks and saying, "Look."
Can't go back to that.
Well, we can't without some legislation. I spoke with the League of Cities today. It's not on their radar screen right now. You should anticipate, we all can anticipate, the banks would oppose that strenuously. We're looking for maybe a small crack that would work for us that the banks could accept. But at the end of the day, it would seem to me, and I'm going to make this advertisement right now, it would seem to me the banks would find themselves in a very awkward position when they have taken a mortgage that requires the property not to have a nuisance, gives them the authority to enter the property and stop a nuisance, when the city has to go in and eliminate a nuisance, for the bank to say, "No, wait a minute, we're going to foreclose the city out and make the public stand for that expense," when that, it's not just mowing the grass, we're talking about a nuisance that is contrary to the health of the community. I mean, under the, and not, I don't know about this particular one, but you can envision a worst case, I'm not talking about this one instance, I'm talking about, imagine a worst-case scenario where you've got a rat-infested, fallen-down structure that you can't keep people out of, and it's creating disease. If you've got that, for the bank to say that, no, you're going to have, the public's going to have to tear it down at its expense because you don't have the home rule authority to prime my mortgage, doesn't seem to play in the long run, but that's, end of the advertisement, that's not the way it works right now.
And I think we all agree with Mr. Curry that, I mean, most of us can look at that in our opinion, it, you know, it's a nuisance and it needs to be torn down. But I also understand what you're saying, it's just like the gentleman said, we, most of us can look at Frank Brown Park entrance and say we think we need a traffic light, but we haven't been able to prove that we need one. So, anything else? So, you're moving forward?
Yes, we are, and in addition, please look at the, this notice and order section. In addition to the relative values, cost of repair versus value, we clarified that talking about the actual tax role and where the value would come from, and then we also added this, this section about the history of adding problems. So, it gives us a little more to talk about if you have an expert to make the speech. Okay.
All right.
A question here, all right? Question, Mr. Curry might be interested in as well, is by adopting these, these changes, will it expedite the matter of this property? Mr. Curry, you're talking about, will it expedite?
Yes.
It will.
It will absolutely expedite.
Is there anything our fire department can do to say this place is bad?
Yes, 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 we can do all of that, and we can do all of that.
Can we do that? How do we move this on?
You adopt this ordinance?
Right.
And you then.
Motion to approve the ordinance.
Okay, well, you can certainly move forward tonight on the first reading if you want.
Motion to approve the ordinance.
Second.
Well, let me read it.
We've read it.
You've got to read it first.
We've read it.
No, but it has to be read publicly.
Okay.
Okay. Mayor, do you want me to?
Does it matter that it was advertised for discussion?
No. No, this is, this is a first reading for notice. It'll be published and then read again on adoption. Agendas are wonderful, but you're not obligated to even have one.
Just to publish it.
Well, you are, if you've got one, yeah. Is it, we got a number?
I'm signing one right now.
All right. This is ordinance 1294. It's an ordinance of the City of Panama City Beach, Florida, amending and re-adopting the substandard structure and junk abatement code.
the substandard structure and junk abatement code of the city, renaming that law the nuisance abatement code, adding definitions of a public nuisance, clarifying that natural persons controlling an artificial person that maintains nuisance shall be criminally liable upon proof of sin, providing additional authorization to demolish and remove structures constituting a public nuisance by reason of abandonment, neglect, inadequate maintenance, or obsolescence, and providing that any of those conditions may be shown by a history of unsecured, dangerous conditions, a history of failure to keep the property secure or safe, a history of attractive nuisance to children, or notwithstanding the reasonable efforts of code enforcement personnel, the property remaining in a condition eminently dangerous to the public health, safety, and welfare, clarifying that ordered or optional repairs, et cetera, must comply with applicable building and life safety codes and requiring compliance with the city's land development code, adding the fees of independent experts needed to prove and abate and collect the abatement cost of a nuisance to the costs which may be charged against the property upon which the nuisance was located, providing that a lien upon the property upon which the nuisance was located shall be superior to the rights of all persons holding an interest in that property who have received notice and an opportunity to administratively appeal the city's order of abatement, shortening the period of forbearance or foreclosure from two years to three months. I neglected to mention that. So, rather large. Clarifying that, on appeal, the city bears the burden of proof that a condition constitutes a nuisance and that the determination of a nuisance must be supported by competent substantial evidence, redefining the cost of abatement, providing that the city may collect the cost of abatement through the levy of a non-adlorm assessment upon the property upon which the nuisance was located, providing that the city may utilize the uniform method authorized by Florida statutes to collect that levy, repealing all ordinances in conflict to the extent of such conflict provided for codification and providing an immediately effective.
Do, do, do you two gentlemen feel that we have read and understand the ordinance well enough? You wanna make your motions again?
I would never question Mr. Sale's ability to speak on the subject of nuisance.
I thought I could do that.
No, no, ma'am, I have no.
Okay, your motion stands?
Yes, please.
We have a motion from Councilman Recker.
Second.
Second, and Councilman Curry. Does anybody in the audience wanna speak?
We have that new law, you always do it, but we have that new law that requires.
There is no other discussion?
Councilman Curry.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Recker.
Yes.
Councilman Russell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Strange.
Yes.
Mayor Obers.
Yes. So, you will move forward? Will there be a second reading in the next meeting?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. We'll publish this and have a second reading, notwithstanding the continued super priority. I repeat, there's a problem.
One quick question about, Mr. Sale, about this. The, the change where we, the city, is not first lien holder in a situation like we're discussing with this particular property, is that made by the Florida Legislature?
Negative, that was made by the Florida Supreme Court.
Right, okay.
Ruling that the city's home rule powers do not extend to the establishment of a super priority lien because the legislature of the state of Florida has already established the priority of liens through the recording statutes. They said the state's preemptive field, you can't get on it.
So, going to our legislators is not an option?
It is the option, it's the only option on that, on that particular.
They can over, they can.
Absolutely.
They can change, change the law, so is that something we should be addressing?
Well, I, I have, I have today contacted the League of Cities to find out if it's on their agenda.
I would think that would be heavily on their.
They have considered it, 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 it's complicated in the sense that.
It's not on their.
It's not on their, it's not, it's not in their plan, it's not in their, what, what do they call it? Their legislative agenda this year, but they.
It affects every city and the member there's four hundred, you know, so I'm surprised it's not a, a.
Well.
A serious consideration because it, it handcuffs us in this situation.
The statutes now provide two exceptions to recording priority on interest in those stuff. One exception is taxes, the other exception is special assessment. All right, we're looking at special assessment.
Taxes always been first in line, correct?
Yes, and so have special assessments. And the taxes are on a parity with, special assessments are on a parity with taxes. If the, if the taxes, if the special assessment is collected through the uniform method, which.
Do you think we would be wise to pursue this with the League of Cities, to pursue it with the legislature?
What, what I would hope we could try to do is find a limited, narrow exception that would permit cities to deal with the larger, more egregious situations. And.
How could you eke a limited, larger exception out of a Supreme Court rule?
By asking the legislature to adopt another, but very narrow, exception along with those two, maybe a third. What I, all we've done so far today is, I asked the league lobbyists to think about it and reach out to the banking association and ask them to get back in touch with me, and let's see how much fire it would have on it, i- if we tried to make it very, very narrow. And we'll see.
There's where, there's where you hit the nail on the head, because that's the banks, the mortgage companies, that's why that was changed.
Yep.
That's the, that's the hundred-pound gorilla, right?
And, and, and my experience has been with the League, what they do is they, they pull cities and trying to find issues that are utmost important to them, but then they also look at the legislators and see if there's any will to look at, and if somebody's willing to do a bill and those kind of things, then they pick out, you know, five or six that they concentrate on. And that doesn't mean that next year they won't concentrate on that.
But we have two, two senior legislators.
Back, back to.
Term limiting out, and I would think if there ever was a time that somebody could step forward, it would be now.
They still gotta get the votes.
Right.
The.
But it's gotta, it's gotta be a bill first.
Back to the advertisement I gave a moment ago, and this, again, is very preliminary, but in thinking through all of this and looking at the laws I have today and some yesterday, a potential, very narrow and consequently expensive, exception could be the city determines a nuisance, files a lawsuit against the property and the owner alleging the nuisance. The court agrees it is a nuisance. The court orders, and this is all in current law, common law, even without your statute, you have your order, orders the nuisance, orders the owner to abate the nuisance within a certain period of time. The owner doesn't abate the nuisance, the court authorizes the city to abate the nuisance, and then places a lien on the property. All of that's current law, can be done.
And that all sounds like two or three years, right?
Hmm, six months.
Six months?
But, at the end of that, if the legislature were to approve it, then the court, if they would give the court the authorization, the authority, the court could then make that lien, including all the attorney's fees, super prior to the mortgage. And what that would do for cities is put us somewhere back in the position of turning to the bank and saying, "Look, we're serious here, we can front this money, it may be six months and maybe eight months, but, you know, you know you can't build anything on that property, no one would be able to build anything on that property. We're gonna proceed and do this, and, you know, so please handle it yourself," which is what we've been successful doing before when we had the ability to have super priority. Now, a- and as I was saying a moment ago, if the banks oppose that, what are they opposing? They're, they're saying they wanna hold a mortgage and stay priority, and keep priority on a situation, on a piece of property where a court has already said this is an imminent hazard and danger to the community. Maybe they'd be willing to do that, I don't know, but that, that's turning on a lot of lights and raising a lot of temperatures, and I don't know, you know, whether we wanna get that heavily involved in it or not. I just, I wasn't gonna get into all this tonight if you asked the question. I just, I just put the feeler out there to see what was happening, and I can circle back and speak.
We have three serious properties, we have three major properties going on that are, that are part of this, that are being stopped by this. So, I mean, and these are, these are not, these are not little, small cabins, these are serious structures.
What other two are we talking about?
No, the Cod Road, yes, thank you.
But those are different properties.
Let, let's, let's let, let's let the process go through, I mean, uh, normal courses without the council predetermining the issues. I mean, please, that's my recommendation to you. Talking in the abstract is one thing, speaking to a specific property before it's been evaluated, and there's a record made, can be, can be argued to be prejudiced.
All right, anything else? Is there anyone in the audience that wants to bring business to the city council? Some announcements. The city manager talked with the Optimist Club, who does the city Christmas parade, and as of this minute, it's still on for tomorrow at four P.M., starting at, I mean, I'm sorry, Saturday, at four P.M., starting at Walmart, and will progress through Pier Park. The second meeting in December of this council is, is not being held. It will be, we are reserving, if there is an issue, we will meet. If there is not, we will see you on January the ninth at six P.M. And we do have a special birthday today, tomorrow. The city manager's birthday is tomorrow, and we wanna wish him a happy birthday.
Happy birthday, ma'am.
And on behalf of the city council and the city staff up here, we would like to say to all of you Merry Christmas, and we will see you next year.
Bye.